We're good.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you hear an echo? We good JP?
I don't think so.
No. Notify the chair first, so the chair may inform others, other attendees. I have received confirmation from the NIM Observer, they are recording, so everyone's warned. If there's anyone else in the tent who wishes to record this meeting, please let me know now. All right. First order of business is public comment. Is anyone in the room want to wish to make a public comment? JP, anyone on Zoom?
No injuries.
Okay, that's great. Okay, next order of business is public hearing with EverSource grant of location for 19 Barrett Street. We have Joanne Callender.
There we go.
All right. Hey, Joanne.
Good evening.
Good evening. JP, can we turn the volume up a bit? Can you hear us, Joanne?
I can, yes.
All right, you're really faint. What are your favorite select board, so what do you?
Oh, here's turned off.
Oh, is it?
For whatever it's worth.
Okay, hold on, Joanne.
Okay. You can see the X, next to the volume side.
We have volume off on this side?
It's the monitors.
On the monitor.
We have to be muted for the main channel to run the audio, so that's normal.
Okay.
Yeah, I turn the thing, can you hear now?
Um, Joanne, you guys say something, could you?
Yes, good evening again.
Good evening again, great to see you.
Thank you.
Tell us about 19 Barrett Street, please.
Well, EverSource is seeking a grand location to install approximately, let's see here, nine feet of conduit into Barrett Street, and that is to provide service to the home at 19 Barrett Street.
Okay, thank you. Kate, is everything in order?
Yes, it is.
Everything's in order? Anyone on the board have a question, comment or concern? None, okay. This is a public hearing, does anyone have any thoughts you'd like to express? None, all right, so let's have a vote. I would welcome a motion, though.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately nine feet of conduit in Barrett Street.
Second.
Okay. Let's have a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous, all right. Joanne, tell us about 90 Wyoming Avenue, please, grant of location.
Yes, EverSource is seeking a rental location to install approximately 10 feet of conduit into Wyoming Avenue, and that is to provide underground service to 90 Wyoming Ave.
Excellent, thank you. Any comments, questions? In the board? Okay. This is a public hearing, does anyone in the room have any comments you wish to make? All right. Hearing none, I'd welcome a motion.
Is there anybody online?
Oh, thank you.
Your hands raised.
Your hands. Good call, Mary, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately 10 feet of conduit in Wyoming Avenue.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. And Joanne?
Have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
Bye now.
Bye bye.
All right, next up, we have a public hearing, application for an all-new liquor, all, a new all-alcohol license for Need Bob Con Incorporated, doing business as Conrad's. We need Bob, Robert Conrad is the owner and the proposed manager of Need Bob, yeah, come on up, please, yeah. Good, I'm starving. Okay.
Hello.
Welcome to NIM. So on your, the name of your company, Need Bob Con, I didn't, until I saw the other ones, Walpole, Sudbury, Wal-
Foxborough, Norwood, yeah, I'm not, Bob Conrad, it's Bob Con, and I go, so it's Need Bob Con, Fox Bob Con.
Okay.
I'm not the brightest sometimes, nice and easy.
All right, so you're gonna be the, you're the proposed manager, owner, manager?
Oh, David.
Yes, yes.
Okay, tell us what you-
Okay, first, thank you for having me come in front of you, I'm Bobby Conrad, so I'm the owner of Conrad's, last name Conrad, so, but, so we have one in Norwood, and we have one in Walpole, one in Foxborough, and we have two golf courses, private golf courses, that we do the food and beverage for, one, Wild Country Club in Canton, and Norfolk Golf Club in Westwood. Conrad, I left them in case you want to take a look. So we've been, I've been in business since almost 31 years now, 1993, and we're more of a family casual dining type restaurant, we have a sports theme, more just for the TVs that we, that look, that we have around, so it's not a sports bar, but we cater to families, couples could sit, and families could sit in the restaurant and not feel like they're at a bar, even though TVs are going on, we don't have the volume on the TVs, we have a pretty extensive menu, we can have, we have children that come in, we have couples, we have families, we cater huge groups of sports, we're really big into the community with sporting events, families come in after the games, I coach high school football, I coach youth sports, so I'm kinda involved in the community at some of the restaurants we have. This particular spot, we have a delay, I'm not sure if you had that, you were able to take a look at that, so we have about 157 seats that we're proposing, I met with the ZBA on Thursday, and it was unanimously voted with them, we had a parking study with Vanessa's study, and they voted unanimously for approval on the parking study for the seats. And it's laid out here, so we have our 14 bar stools, so around the bar, and then we have three different sections within the restaurant, we'll have high tops in the bar area with the 14 seats, we have a dining room that has about 45 to 50 seats, and then a second dining room that'll have about 60 seats, in that dining room, we might have, all my other locations, they're a little bit bigger, they have about 240 seats or so, so we have private function rooms, and Needem, we'll have the, we'll have the room, it's still gonna be dining, it's mostly during the week, and maybe on the weekends, or a bereavement type thing, baby shower, bridal shower, we might have that room for a private party, we do a lot of catering, we have a takeout station when they first walk in. The menu, it's pretty extensive, we have a little for everybody, we have salads, appetizers, burgers, pizza, steak tips is a big thing, we do about four or 5,000 pounds a week of steak tips combined, and the other locate, I'm sick of them, I eat way too much of the pizza, and I'm not, so we have a, you know, we have special seven days a week, so we have a little, a little for everybody, we have gluten-free menu, two of our locations, we have a separate gluten-free menu, lower location, kitchen's a little small, so we have gluten-free items, but not a separate gluten-free menu, but, but we really like to cater the community, we don't just say that, but we're involved with the sporting, sporting events, and the sports teams, youth, high school, all of that, we like to really be involved with that as well.
Told the boosters about you. Excellent, okay, so this is, you're gonna be the manager of record, right?
Yes.
Is, you're gonna be at the store, so how's this gonna work for?
Yeah, so, I should explain, so I have, my, my theory with our restaurants is we have a GM that's pot owner kinda, like, we give them pot ownership, you know, not through the, through the corporation, but, so they're invested in the restaurants that they take care of doing well, we have a chef that we give a percentage to, so the guys that are hands-on, I've had over 10, 12 people that went forward there these years, you know, and they're part, kinda like we're pot owners, as they pay, so they have a vested interest in the restaurant doing well, and they, they take a great interest in that, so, and Needem, I have Larry Lovejoy, he's been with me for 15 years, he's came from the corporate side of Knacky Average Joe's years ago, he now runs the Foxborough one, he, we have an opening crew, we open a restaurant, so we take our top GM, our top manager, and our top chef, and we start the restaurant with them and myself, and we slowly incorporate our other folks that have, at the restaurant that we train, they're working Norwood, they're working Foxborough, they're working Walpole, and then our training crew, that's, that opens up our new location, we'll go back to locations, and the other, other folks tie into that new restaurant. So it'll be Larry Lovejoy and myself will open this up, and Ronnie Velazquez will be the chef, and then Nicole will be one of our assistant managers, so we always have a GM or assistant GM on site 24/7.
Okay. Does that, is that okay by record A for a liquor license, does he have to be on site, or?
No, he has to be on site, or there has to be a responsible party on site, but he's responsible.
Okay, great.
And what happens later, when the opening crew leaves, and there's a replacement, we have to replace the liquor license, or do we?
There's a request for a change of manager, that often happens, it starts with one, and then another manager will come in, and the board will decide.
It's probably done in the past?
No, well, I haven't had to change a manager, I'm ultimately responsible as a manager on record.
He's gonna stay.
It's considered manager on record, but it doesn't necessarily mean a manager has to be there full-time, GM, if I'm saying it correctly, so I'm the manager record on each one, so I open the store with the GM, and then a qualified GM or manager has to make sure that, you know, they're doing the right thing, or they have to answer me, or definitely answer you, so, they'll be, definitely, we have a, we have a TIPS certified manager, she's certified to teach the TIPS class, so we update, anyone that hasn't been TIPS certified, each month, we send out an email to the GMs, and they talk to anyone that's either hired new that hasn't, doesn't have a TIPS cert, a TIP card, and we make sure each month, every two months, that they, they do a class, she has a, holds a class, but she's actually TIPS certified manager to teach a TIPS certified class.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if that's okay, it's more of a statement than a question, really, your location is gonna be right across the street from the high school, and I guess I just want to make sure that you understand that Needem is pretty serious about our alcohol regulations, we've actually just made them a little stricter. I wanna know, if you're the manager of record for all of your restaurants, have you had any other alcohol license issues?
I've had a violation 30, 27 years, I think when I first opened, we have a overcrow, I was more of a pub owner before I was a restaurant owner, and we had a violation for overcrowded, one time when you said bands, dots, softball, but I've been out, I haven't had that type of atmosphere since 2001, when I turned into, once I had kids, I turned into a restaurant owner, I haven't had a violation since I've been a restaurant owner in 2001.
Okay, 'cause I think you can expect your restaurant to be filled with kids, especially, you know?
Yeah.
They releases, school, school functions, and we just wanna make sure that-
No, I understand, Walpole High School is literally less than a half a mile from my Walpole location, so the half-days, we get a lot of the middle school, high school kids.
Right, so sorry.
Yeah, I know, I have three believe me, I know, but I've coached against Needem, I've been on that hill forever, coaching, and I love the atmosphere up there, you know, the high school up at the hill there, so I've known them guys for a lot of years.
Marian?
So I was just gonna ask, along the same lines, what's your policy for carding people?
So I know, you know, some people say if they look under 40, we, we, part of our tip training, we just say, you know, if you feel, anyone, they know, if anyone feels like they're even under 30 or 40, just make sure you card them, but it's by individual going in there, so we, we're kinda more of a restaurant, I wouldn't even consider ourselves, you can always have somebody that's gonna try and come in that's underage, or any, any kids out of college could probably try that, right, but I think we're more of a restaurant, we don't really have a bar atmosphere, but our servers and managers know that they got a, anyone that they feel that even, not even just close, anyone that's under 35, 40, they would definitely card them, I shouldn't say definitely, should card them, you know, we're not, we don't card every single person that orders a drink, but if it's, they feel like anyone's even close, they should definitely, 100%, do the right thing, make sure they card them.
And for people who you do card, what's your procedure in your other restaurants? I know what our procedure is mandated to be in Needem, but what is the procedure that you're accustomed to?
Yeah, so is, do you have the black box that I have, you guys have a-
We do have the device.
Yeah, so that'll, that'll actually come into play, I don't have that in any of my locations, so I gotta be honest, I, I know my, my kids who are out of college, they'll tell me about that now in Boston, when they go in, they have this black box, so, I gotta be honest, I'm not, I know about what it is, and I know that's regulated in Needem, so I guess that's how we would use that system, but how we are now is we have it recarted, and if anyone has any question at all with the look of the license, we have a book that has every license in there, so it kinda matches just in case, but this stings all the time, and the ABCC is great with that, they'll even, they'll even give you a heads up, that you come, hey, well, listen, we're gonna be there in such and such a time, or, you know, within a week, but we, we've had, I can't say, at least 10 or 12 times where they've come in unannounced, you know, they do send you a letter, say sometime in August, they're coming, and we, we haven't, you know, knock on, we've never had one that's a violation yet.
Okay, so those are checks that we do a couple times a year in Needem as well. And then Kate, I was just going to ask for everybody's edification, how do we come to have this all-alcohol license available, is this one that's available because of the shift in population?
No, we have, we have never fulfilled all of our restaurants, because it's a restaurant.
This is the last one, so this is the last one?
No, we still have, I don't have that number with me, I'm sorry, but we do have more room for restaurants, yeah, it's the package stores that are quite closely used up, but we have more room in the restaurants, I can get you that.
I did have one question, if possible, on the license, I only learned of the, the back, black box, and the, looking through the regulations, the hours of operation, so what is the alcohol, all alcohol license for time at nighttime, for, you know, the weekends or the games and football and all that restaurant time, is it, is it 11 o'clock? Is that what I saw?
Midnight.
It is midnight, okay.
I guess we're-
Well, depends on what you request, right, so we have to look at what you request, but we do permit up to midnight.
That's what I put on, I didn't even catch up, so that's why I put on my license, but I thought I read something in there that was earlier, so that's why I was asking.
There are other people who have asked for earlier times, and then-
No, I meant the regulations that I read, had, I thought had an earlier time than when I applied for, that's why I was asking, and I put midnight, but I, you know, I just, I wasn't sure, 'cause of regulations, that's why I was asking how you determine that.
I think it's what you requested.
Okay.
And then Kate, the, the other thing is, we do have the ability to request a one-off situation for New Year's Eve, or something like that, so there are some special-
I close every holiday, for the staff, pretty much, I, you know, Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's Eve, 4th of July, I stay open like Mother's Day, Father's Day, but all the other holidays, I give up for the staff.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, and, I'm sorry, what was the secret recipe for the TIPS again?
I live and cook for soul, I say, people invite me to cook, I'll say, hey, just take the steak chips, you don't want me to go, I eat too much of the pizza, actually, so.
Okay. Marian, do you wanna give the Dan Matthews speech?
Well, I, I think we've had iterations of it, sort of spread out between a couple of us, but, but the answer is, as Heidi said, and as I said, we take this seriously.
Absolutely.
Our expectation is, we do not wanna see you back here for a violation, and our penalties have been increased, so that they become more painful far more quickly, so we appreciate your taking guidance from the regulations that we have and implementing that way, and if you do that, you will not come back to see us for this reason, we'd be delighted to see you for other reasons related to your business.
I totally agree.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Section 12 Restaurant All Alcohol License Application submitted by Need Bob Con Inc., doing business as Conrad's, including the appointment of Robert Conrad as manager of record, and if so approved, forward the application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, this is a public hearing, does anyone in the room have a question? Hearing none, we'll have a-
Nobody online.
Yeah.
No one online.
No one online?
No one online.
All right, have a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Welcome to Needem.
Thank you, and now that it's over, I just wanna say, everyone I've dealt has been great, JP, is JP here?
That's JP.
Miles, so I didn't wanna say that before, but they were awesome, so thank you so much, you guys have been very welcome.
And when are you hoping to be open?
So, we'll be filing for the permit on Friday, probably, I wanna make sure this went well, and the ABCC takes a couple months sometimes.
Right.
But our goal usually is about three and a half months, and once we start construction, 'cause it's gonna be fully demolition, gutted inside, you know, except for the kitchen, so about three and a half, three to three and a half months, hopefully.
So sometime in the fall, people will see you.
We hope, yeah, yeah.
Great, good.
Thanks again.
Good luck, well done.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing, application for change of hours amendment to an all-alcohol license, Metro West Dining LLC, doing business as the common room, Scott Court, to see manager Thomas Griffin here.
Yep, he's coming in.
Funny, but your ear should have been ringing, there's a previous one, wanted to ask if they could stay open to 12, and this is what you're here for.
That's what we're here for, exactly, yeah, we were actually having that discussion at home.
So you've applied for a change of hours amendment to Section 12 Restaurant All Application.
Right.
Okay. Explain.
We're not really planning on being open that late every time, but, you know, when a game, particularly when the playoffs we've just had, which were a great roll around, you know, some of the games go a little late, and so it'd be really, really good for us to be able to stay open, so, you know, probably like a Friday, Saturday, you know, or when there's a game that goes late, you know, we would, we wanna do the, do the midnight. Yeah.
Excellent. Any questions?
Yes. So it's opportunistic, is how you're seeing that it's used, and we were actually in there during one of the playoff nights, and we saw, as people were coming in to watch, and we stayed to watch for a while, it was fun.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought you had a good time.
Yeah. They're, they're always, it's like, are you gonna stay open until the end of the game, and I was like, we'll try.
Not yet, soon.
So will you continue to serve food for that extra hour?
Food, so we switch over to appetizers, but food is available, so we don't do the full menu.
Like a late night menu, basically.
Can someone remind me, I feel like this is where Miles would be like, I'm missing Miles, can someone remind me what the mix needs to be in-
60/40, I think?
60/40, so-
We're about that right now.
So I've, I've come to your restaurant, and I've walked by your restaurant at different hours of the day, and there are many times when the dining room is not so full, but the bar is packed, do you have any concerns that-
There's a lot of times during the day when the bar isn't packed, and it's all families, we're getting a lot more families than I thought, and it's great, and that's when it's packed, and they, they kinda equal out, sometimes, like, if you walk by later at night, you'll see that side, but even that side's eating, they're all getting the-
Yeah, the tables along the windows are typically, they're all getting food most of the time, so, we call that the bar side, but full menu is available there, and oftentimes families, they, they take that left, and they, and they eat in there, you know?
People, for, for some people prefer high tops, so they just wanna eat in there, so, I mean, any, anybody can eat on that side.
Okay, I just wanna make sure this isn't gonna tip you over.
We're no, we're like, we're, we're actually serving a lot more food than we kind of anticipated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As an owner, you wanna stay close to that 60/40, but we're like 70/30.
Yeah.
All right, it's a good number, 70/30, nothing wrong with it.
Nothing wrong with it.
Yeah.
Josh, any questions?
All right.
All right. I would welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the change of hours amendment to the Section 12 Restaurant All Alcohol License Application submitted by Metro West Dining LLC, doing business as the common room, and to provide an exception to Section 3.1.2.1 of the Town of Needem's Regulations for the Sale of Alcoholic Beverages, to permit the sale of alcohol for on-premises consumption after 11:00 P.M.
Second.
Kevin, it's a public hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
So this is a public hearing, does anyone in the room have a question, comments? Any other discussion from the board?
There's none online.
No one online, all right, let's have a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Super.
Congratulations.
We'll see you at the next playoff game.
Yes.
I'd also like to thank all you guys for the support, 'cause I have seen a lot of you guys come in, and it's great, the town has just been super supportive in general, so we're trying to be a good part of the community. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Next, we have a public hearing, application for multiple amendments to an all-alcohol license, Spiga LLC, doing business as Spiga. Francesco Iacovit.
Yes, correct.
Thomas Miller.
Yes.
We are one minute ahead, so I'll just flag that, but here we go.
Oh, all right, we can discuss.
So I might, I make my, make a motion to move our, our consent agenda and the appointment calendar as provided.
Super, second.
Discuss, oh, we don't discuss.
We could discuss.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you, Marian.
All right.
Are we doing on time?
We're close, not very bad.
How's everybody doing tonight?
We're good.
We're moving along, yeah, that's always nice, doesn't always happen. I know.
No time so far, that's why I was, I was concerned, we are chunking right along, so, good.
Hello there, Thomas.
So you guys have applied for multiple amendments-
Yes.
To existing-
Yes.
You wanna talk, walk us through it all?
Why not, it's what he pays me to do. Good evening, everyone, my name is Tom Miller from McDermott Colty Miller in Hanley in Boston, I'm here with Francesco, we're here because Francesco is purchasing Marissa's interest in the, in the application, in the license, and as part of that, it also has the knock-on effect of removing her as a manager on the LLC, and also swapping her for Francesco as the, as the manager of record on the license. Francesco has been in the industry for more than 10 years, in various roles, including multiple roles supervising the sale and service of alcohol in various Section 12s throughout the city and the outlying suburbs, he's been with the licensee since 2020, when he bought in, bought out a previous member of the corporation, so he's intimately familiar with the business, has been there for a while, has helped it to continue to be the successful restaurant that it is, he is, you know, he is a US citizen, he's, lives in Newton, so he's close by, he's TIPS trained, has all the required, not just tips, but Needem tip-
In person.
In person, that's the word, in person as Needem requires, he, as I said, has experience, he is familiar with the laws of the Commonwealth, the rules of the ABCC, and this board for the sale and service of alcohol. You guys aren't gonna see any changes in the way this business has been run for the past, well, at least four years since he's been there, and however, I honestly, off the top of my head, I don't know how long it has been there, but has run without incident during that time, and will continue to be, they'll still be the good neighbor and the quality restaurant that you all have come to expect and, and come to rely on in the community, we're happy to answer any questions you have about this application, or Francesco in general.
Questions?
Well, I'm going to ask about Marissa. Is she still part of the operation or is she chosen to move somewhere else?
She's exploring other opportunities. She feels that she has some different things she wants to do and is...
Not within the Spiga menu frame, maybe?
Yeah. We'll see. But as of right now, she's leaving the entity and we'll see where she goes from here. We're not sure yet.
I also wanted to ask about Marissa, because I find actually that I feel a little uncomfortable with this, because everything is e-signed, which makes me feel like we haven't... If she's not here to bless this change, I feel a little odd about doing this based on electronic documents only.
Well, I mean, the signature...
I recognize that might not be your responsibility, but I wonder how the relationship is here.
Well, what I can tell you is, you know, there have been appropriate conflicts of interest waivers. We have represented Marissa for many years as a firm. We have represented Francesco for many years. This is, you know, she assented to this. This is not, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but this is, you know...
Yeah, it's, I'm not making that your responsibility. I'm saying that this is, as it appears here, I mean, I could probably do these up. I just, it makes me a little, it makes me feel a little uncomfortable. And I wonder, have we done anything on the town side to verify any of this information? Is that our responsibility?
I would have said it's pretty standard, actually, to come in this way, where the person who's the new owner essentially takes their time to kind of represent.
I'm not casting any aspersions. I'm just noticing that I have nothing here with even her signature.
In this practice, you know, the person who is taking over the license, this is not a transfer per se, but you know, who is taking over the license is the person responsible for filing the applications and moving the process. Where they say transfer from one entity to another, it would be entirely on the transfer, transferee. Transfer has very little to do with it at all. It just is what it is. They just, you know, they sign, similar to a real estate transaction, you know, if I'm buying your house, I have to file the documents.
And actually, that is what brought this up for me, because I know that there was a real estate transaction that happened in town a few years ago and was found to be false, and all the documents were e-signed. Again, this is, I'm not casting aspersions on you. I'm just noticing that we have nothing here with this person's actual signature. So it makes me feel a little uncomfortable, but I recognize that you have this relationship with her and that this may be beyond the bounds of what our responsibility is.
I do think it's in our experience when applicants are represented by counsel, that we can trust in the process, especially counsel has been involved in many alcohol licenses.
And I'm trying not to put my bar card on the line.
Understandable. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, is somebody online?
Okay, sure. Bring him on, please. Who is this?
Ross Donald.
Ross Donald. Hey, Ross.
He's not in yet.
He lowered his hand.
Okay. All right. Well, Paula added, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the room or on Zoom who wishes to speak?
I love Spiga. It's a great restaurant.
And it will continue to be.
She's not taking all the recipes with her, right?
Nope. Are there any other comments from the board? All right. I'd welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the application for multiple amendments to a Section 12 Restaurant All Alcohol License submitted by Spiga LLC, doing business as Spiga, including the appointment of Francesco Iacovini as manager of record. And if so, approved, forward the application to the ABCC for review and final approval. Second.
Any other discussion? Marian? Okay. Let's have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Carry on.
Thank you so much. Now, next we have the Needham Council for Arts and Culture, Ninety-One Chapel Street mural, with Joni Sockit, Heather Simon, and G. B. Chilia.
Almost.
So the microphones are for TV, actually, not for the room. So those are just their voices. We'll try and speak louder.
I love speaking.
Hello, thanks for having us.
Hi, thank you.
The NCAC would like to hire an artist to create a mural at Ninety-One Chapel Street on the south side of the pedestrian walk-through. Currently, it's a lackluster wall on a walkway that leads up to a beautiful view of Town Hall, especially on a sunny day. People regularly pass through this area when coming from the train platforms parking area and from businesses back into the parking lot and from back entrances into the center of town. Having something bright and welcoming there would be a very positive way for people to enter Needham. It would connect their commute to our town and would exemplify the spirit and welcoming nature of our town. And we think it's a perfect spot to enhance this nondescript small space with a bright and cheerful mural that opens into the downtown area. We have procured very enthusiastic permission from the owners, the Pessarides Brothers, to paint a mural there. We follow the process for procuring an artist according to the guidelines of the Mass Cultural Council. As the mural is under $10,000, we do not have to send out a general RFP, but we can choose from among the artists who submitted work for the space for the Panzi mural up in the Heights. We have close to $5,000 of remaining ARPA funds, which will go towards that mural. Our timeline has the mural completed by November as required by ARPA funding, and we are confident we can adhere to that schedule. ARPA funding has to be spent by December 31st. We will send out a request for designs within a week to 10 days, approximately. The applications will come back to us within a month by the end of the first week in August. We'll make our decision in a very timely manner in August and inform the artist. This will give the chosen artist about 10 weeks to schedule and install the mural by the middle of November before there's any real cold weather. As the wall is about 30 feet by 11 feet, 330 square feet, we see no problems with the timeline. We look forward to beautifying Needham with a second meaningful mural in Needham that will enhance the simple experience of walking through an alleyway. We are sure that colorful artwork will make commuters and others smile.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Question? The only question. This is going to be on a wall of a private building?
Yes.
Yeah, she was saying that we got permission.
The Pessarides Brothers, who own that building, they're very excited about it. He said as long as it's... He even came to my house because he wants everything in a hard copy. And I said, I'll put it in the mail. No, 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 no. I'll be in Needham. I'll come get it. So they're very enthusiastic about it.
That's great.
Kathy?
What kind of, so I love the Panzi one. It's great. What kind of guidelines are you giving to the artists?
We're still working on specific guidelines. And when we talked about the space, we just felt like it was a space that would, we don't want to narrow it too much, but we do want to, you know, it will be a little bit similar to the Panzi in terms of it being a welcoming, like something that will provide a welcoming space. And also, it's sort of a transitional space from the area where people, you know, commuters are getting off or people are parking or maybe people are getting out from the back of their businesses and then they're going into the main, you know, and then they go through this alleyway. And it's, there's a lot of foot traffic there, too. We were there at a quiet time just looking at the space and there were a number of people and it wasn't like time to go to work or time to go home.
The guidelines that we gave last time were the history of the town and obviously the one who we chose, the Panzi, did his homework. You know, the sense of the town, inclusion. Do you have it with you, what we wrote?
I didn't. The first one I don't know.
I didn't bring that. But it's very broad and yet it's narrow. We don't want anything controversial, no words, no slogans, nothing that's going to make...
No advertising.
No advertising.
No logos.
No agenda. Panzis have no agenda.
Well, I think you just mean non-controversial, which is also what they asked.
Which is what the Pessaridi brothers asked for, as long as it's not controversial. And he especially asked for no words, which we, that's part of our RFP.
Although this isn't an RFP. This is different.
It's a re-request. You know, you applied before. We have a second mural.
And there's also like very, like if you look at the Massachusetts Guidelines for Promotion in Public Arts, I'm happy to...
We have the...
Yeah.
They have.
Okay, okay. So if you look at that, it says that you have to hold up forum, which we would do via Zoom for all the artists for question and answer.
Yeah.
And then you, we would select a group of final artists from all the applicants. And again, the ideas would be about connecting travelers to their work or to their home sort of. And also, like the other thing that I noticed in the pictures, when I was taking pictures of it, is that it's like this, like Joni was saying, but it really, you can really see it. You have this dingy wall.
Yeah.
And then this beautiful Town Hall.
Right.
The gold dome. So it would be really nice.
On a sunny day, when you come out of there, it's really nice. It's really...
So our hope would be that the artists would really pay attention to that.
And something that's happy and light, you know, nothing that's going to make people stop and go, oh, my God, I haven't thought about that. I need to think about that. That's not, you know, and smiley, happy people spend money more.
And also, I think it's the flow of the space.
Yeah.
People are moving. And so to kind of make, I kind of myself, I mean, this isn't up to me to decide, but maybe it suggests this in the call to applicants, that there's some kind of fluid motion to this space, too.
So the smiley face on the wall would come down?
Been there a very long time.
I want to know what it's made of, or I don't want to know what it's made of this.
Okay.
No more smiley face on the wall. It's the first thing that's going to go.
One more question. Do you imagine that this will be painted on or mounted?
It's painted. It's painted. And most likely in that space, because it's so much smaller, and I can't say for sure, but most likely an artist would use outdoor acrylic as opposed to the spray painting that the other artists used because it was so big.
Right. Excellent. Sounds great. I'd welcome a motion. If there are no other questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to permit the NCAC to proceed with procurement of a mural for the side of Ninety-One Chapel Street and utilize Massachusetts Cultural Council art procurement procedures alongside previous Town of Needham, Needham Council for Arts and Culture process to decide artist curation.
Second.
More discussion? All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks a lot.
Look forward to it.
We're excited for another mural.
Yes. We've had a lot of positive feedback from the person.
Yeah. First one's wonderful.
Oh, yeah.
It's great.
Thank you.
Next, we have an update. CBD and synthetic THC input and other products, Timothy McDonald, Director of Health and Human Services. Thank you.
Nice to be with you. So I have a few slides that I'm happy to go through and take questions. I have, if you don't mind moving to the next one, JP? There we go. So this is sort of a confluence of a couple of different things. There is significant concern in public health and substance use prevention sectors about synthetic marijuana. I'll get into that a little bit more on the next page. There is also confusion given sort of some overlapping federal and state definitions on what qualifies as marijuana that's regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission, what qualifies as a synthetic derivative, and what qualifies as CBD product, which is based on hemp, and then what qualifies as a food-infused or edible CBD product. The Globe had an article, and I think, Kathy, you had forwarded to us, which I used a screenshot of, that talked a little bit about how this is a growing industry nationwide. It's come to a number of Massachusetts communities. When we received it, so there was also a couple of sort of in-service trainings that were provided to staff, our staff by Mass Health Officers Association and Mass Association of Health Boards. So that sort of all happened within a two or three month span. We did go out and check in with the community sort of for all three categories. We found a couple of liquor stores that were selling infused products, found one pharmacy that was selling a product that was not allowed for sale, and we found a SunMed or CBD store. We didn't actually find any gas stations or convenience stores, in large part because Needham has predominantly chains, which have corporate law departments that try to make sure that everything is 100% legal. So often in other communities, you find smaller operators that, you know, either are interested in selling this or distributor told them this is legal and they start selling it without having a mechanism to really double check that their distributor represented that factually correct. So if you don't mind going to the next slide, JP, there's a little bit of history here. I don't know that it's that interesting to anyone, except that Congress passed a law and it caused more confusion than it created or resolved. It created a loophole specifically in the definition of what Delta 9, sort of naturally derived THC, and the essentially potency amount. So there's a couple of legal cases going on, but the court ruled that Congress, by writing it this way, basically created a legal gray area for synthetic THC products, Delta 8 and Delta 10 predominantly. So those are the subject of sort of ongoing litigation. We feel confident in our interpretation of state and federal law, as well as the Board of Health's regulations within Needham, that we can restrict the sale of those products. We also, and I think it's important to sort of have a little bit of a distinction. I have very significant concerns from a public health perspective about Delta 8 and Delta 10. I have concerns about CBD and edible CBD products. Those concerns are not to the same degree in terms of, they have not been sort of tested, they've not gone through the same regulatory structure as a lot of the products through the Cannabis Control Commission, for example. But because they're CBD-based, the likelihood of a bad outcome related to sort of the drug component is not there. It would be a question of like, this wasn't made properly, this CBD edible, and you ate a bad cookie and you're going to get food poisoning type of thing.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that we have a ton of discretion if we know that people are selling products that are illegal for sale. But it is sort of important to understand that in the realm of this area, there are some topics that are a very big concern and some topics that are more of a minor concern. But once we are made aware of someone not following the law and selling products that are not legal for sale in Needham or in Massachusetts, then we acted. If you don't mind going on, Miles, to the next one. This is the loophole I talked about, Delta 8 and Delta 10, the public health concerns I think I referenced. But again, the sort of hemp-derived CBD is sort of a different level and a lower level of concern than the synthetic Delta 8 and Delta 10. But all are illegal for sale. If you don't mind going to the next one, JP. DPH and DAR have periodically weighed in on this subject and have been requested, so that's the Mass Department of Public Health, the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, have been asked to, by local public health for a while, to sort of say something definitively. They did so on May 29th. I had known that that was coming for a while. I think we had, we would have loved to have had it for our own... for our own concerns in town because it would have been helpful to clarify as simply as that and just point to a memo. But it didn't come out until May 29. But it did basically say that Cannabis Control Commission project, products are over in this area. Synthetic THC products are over here. CBD is legal in this realm. But that includes essentially lotions and massage oils and that sort of thing.
Right.
Not CBD-infused food products or edibles.
Right.
So that was helpful. And you can see sort of the regulatory language of where it falls in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Regulations, the Mass General Laws. But it was sort of a very helpful summary. If you don't mind going on to the next one. We did, as we said, go around to the community. We did survey all of our liquor stores through in-person visits.
Okay.
All of the convenience stores, all of the pharmacies, and the SunMed CBD store. It was well-publicized. It was a challenging time. And when you talk about working with a convenience store or a liquor store or something, you're talking about saying, you know, this product that you're selling is illegal. It's one of 1,000 products that you sell or 500 products that you sell. In the case of the CBD store, I don't know the exact breakdown, but the sales volume of the products that were not legal for sale was substantial, something like 75% or 80% of the sales volume was accounted for under those products that are not legal for sale. So we treated, from the public health perspective, everyone equally. It's just one type of business, that CBD store business, unlike a convenience store that also sells Coke and Pepsi and Snicker bars and that sort of thing, didn't have as broad a base of products to say, okay, we can't sell this one. That's not going to make our business sort of unsustainable. Obviously, it's very unfortunate that Ms. Nickel had to close her business. And that's not something that, you know, anyone in my department was excited about. But once we were aware of the rules, we did try to follow them. We did involve town council. So I wanted to give you that information and then happy to have any discussion or answer any questions that I could.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Tim, I appreciate the update. And I know that there have been a lot of questions from people just trying to understand exactly what was going on. It sounds like the May 29 statement hopefully clarified that more from town to town. Are you getting a sense that the enforcement is now more consistent across the area? Because I know there was a sense that perhaps Needham was at the forefront of doing what had been clearly articulated, but--
So I think one of the challenges in local public health is the different resources, levels that are available in different departments because public health departments are almost entirely dependent on local appropriations from their city or town. There is vast disparities in the resources that are available to them. We, very fortunately, thanks to the town manager, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the Board of Health, are a very well-resourced community. So we have the resources, if we're made aware of something, to go and respond to that. Other communities maybe aren't able to get all of the very high-priority stuff done. And so they're, I guess my hope is that they would eventually get to enforcement of these rules, but I don't know if it's happening immediately.
Thank you.
You mentioned that you're more concerned with Delta 8 and Delta 10. Could you just explain for us exactly what those are?
Sure.
And how they relate to marijuana products and what your concerns are?
Sure. So I might ask JP to go back to, I think, the second slide? Third slide? If you don't mind, JP. So here's the definition, and it, you know, is very specific. But the Farm Act, which pulled hemp out of the sort of two phases of, is it hemp or is it, you know, THC-based marijuana? And said hemp-based agricultural products are legal. That's not the same as THC marijuana in terms of psychoactive component. By defining it in such a way, so the Delta 9 concentration of not more than 0.3% on a dry weight basis, they created a loophole that allowed products that are not derived from nature to be chemically altered to have a psychoactive component, but not meet that definition. So Delta 8 and Delta 10. I think it maybe goes without saying, given that we're talking about this product, this isn't like a well-regulated national company that are making these products. This isn't a product, a company or product that is regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission, which does have extensive regulations. These are essentially bootleg and black market items. So manufactured correctly, they, I have some concerns about them, but we have no guarantee of manufacture correctly. And the concerns are in the psychoactive components and effects and the dosing and that sort of thing. But because they are black market and bootleg, concentrations could be off. They could be adulterated or cut with different things. So that's where--
They are psychoactive, right?
Yes.
They are psychoactive. They're not regulated.
No.
They were being sold in not very many places here, but a couple places.
Yep. And depending on the community in Massachusetts, they are sold in different areas. And other states have had a more active market in this than Massachusetts has, although it is coming or is continuing to arrive. It is definitely an area of concern. I don't want to downplay that. I think the, what I wanted to sort of distinguish was CBD products, for example, that, you know, are a tincture or something, are not, because of the lack of psychoactive components, are not the same level of concern for me. But the lack of a sort of regulated and inspected manufacturing process, the lack of sort of quality control and testing, that is sort of the concern with CBD, and it is still illegal.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Question. Do you know if there are any establishments regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission in Needham that legally sell any of these products?
To the best of my knowledge, and there is only one, and it's a medical, you know, marijuana treatment center. But there's only one, and I don't believe it sells any Delta 8 or Delta 10 right now. That is based on discussions with them last year, so I don't know if that's changed in the last, in 2024. So it was fall 2023. But at least as of that time, they weren't selling any of those.
What CBD, do you know?
They do have some CBD products for sale, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Happy to be here.
Thank you.
You put yourself very well. It's always hard.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Are we on time?
We're on time.
Great. The next item is a public hearing. A proposed MBTA Needham Line commuter rail service modifications. I just want to frame the issue a bit, and then I'll open up to my colleagues, and then I'll invite anyone who wishes to speak to come up. First off, we've received a lot of community comments about this already. What was noteworthy was actually how thoughtful and polite everyone was. I was really astounded. Some of them were very, like, you know, with warm regards and whatnot. So thank you. We can all disagree on stuff, but it was actually really nice that we all, we have good manners. Second, we've learned a lot in this process. I've learned a ton. I did not understand the complexities of scheduling and the needs of our residents. Sometimes it's great to balance it out. So it's been a good and thoughtful learning experience, at least for me. And finally, also want to underscore, this proposal is a pilot program. It does not replace the quiet zone, rather underscores the need for it. It did not originate with the MBTA. I got to shout more.
This is not for the room. This is for the--
This is for the magic of TV. All right. This is not replace the quiet zone, rather underscores the need for it. And this is not an MBTA proposal. This is like, we're a half step off, half a step off from trying to ask questions about a pilot program. That's all the discussion is. So nothing is, we are not far along on this at all. This is just for inquiries. The Select Board did meet with the MBTA and was floated as idea that you can try this. Initially, it was thought that this would stop and start at the, at Hersi. But that can't work technically because there's a gate block. So that's why the, it sort of shifted to the junction. The specific proposed modifications are weekdays, the 5:05 a.m. inbound train from Needham would depart from the Needham Junction Station and the 12:13 a.m. outbound from South Station would terminate at the Needham Junction Station. On weekends, the 6:10 a.m. inbound train from Needham would depart from the Needham Junction Station and the 10:15 p.m. outbound train from South Station would terminate at the Needham Junction Station. So that's where we sit. Do my colleagues have any thoughts, concerns, questions?
Could I just, I'd like to just add some more information. So part of the basis for the discussion that we had with the MBTA went back to what happened in 2021 and the discussion that we had with them at that time and the public hearing that we had at that time around their proposal to add back the weekend service, including Sundays for the first time. And during that process, we had a discussion, in fact, about having the train just come in potentially as far as Hersi. And that was as far as the discussion got. And that was the request of the town that we actually considered doing that. And the MBTA concluded that they were not going to do that, that they were concerned with equity for everybody and they wanted to go the whole nine yards. So I did want people to know that that was sort of the starting point. And when we had the discussion previously about Hersi, it had not been revealed to us at that time that Hersi was not actually a place that they could formally start and reverse the direction of the train. So they came back and suggested that they would go to Junction. I also want to mention that the two trains, or the trains that we're talking about, this first and last on each day, are one-way trains. So I know that there were a variety of people who were worried, again, about the equity issue of people coming into Needham to work, workers coming into Needham, workers trying to leave Needham. That's not the purpose of this train. The reason that we have this train first in the morning and last in the evening is because the town, again, asked the MBTA and has told the MBTA that we do not want them to leave the train overnight in Needham at the Needham Heights Station. And the reason we requested that, people should know, this board is working very hard to try to serve the people of Needham. But what we learned was going on was the MBTA in the winter tends to like to start to warm up the engine around 2:30 in the morning, after they just shut it off at 12:30 in the morning. And that is really hard for the people who are right next to the engine to hear that engine idling for several hours before the train actually moves out. So we said, you can't keep it here. We're going to have to bring in a train in the morning, and we're going to have to send the train away at the end of the day. So that was how we got to this point. Trains were added earlier and later compared to pre-pandemic. We are all actually excited to see the additional service here. I'm glad to hear that, you know, the service is back to about 90% of the service and continues to grow. The MBTA is doing better than many, many other rail systems in other parts of the country with restoring that. We need even more people on trains, and we need those trains to work effectively for the town. We had another question, or several other questions. I want to just mention electrification was asked, okay, by many people. Everybody would love for the trains to be electrified. That's going to be a very expensive process. There are a couple of pilot trains that are on order by the MBTA. They're not due to arrive before 2026. And at that point, they'll put a pilot out on a line. It's unlikely to be the Needham Line. We should be so lucky to get a couple of electrified trains. So it's going to be a long time still before electrified trains get here, which means we will be continuing to operate with the trains that exist, that are diesel trains. Right? And then the last thing I think I want people to know before questions start, there may be some other things, but the last thing is we have asked, based on the feedback already from many of you, specific to the junction, if it's possible for the MBTA to look, we know they can't stop at Hersi, but could they look at having the train idle farther back on the other side of Chestnut Street at the curve? Okay? Or could they actually take the train and, once it's done the job that it needs to do, reverse direction and hold it at Hersi? So both of those questions have been put on the table. We do not know what the options are, but we're interested in hearing feedback from you about this proposal, which would still result in a fewer horns at difficult times of the day for many citizens in town who listen, as I do, to those horns coming all the way across town and going all the way back. So we're grateful for your feedback, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Questions, comments? JP, do we have the map of the rails and the schedule? Could we just post those if anyone wants to refer to them? Josh, anything?
Oh, I think we should talk about the ridership data because that was asked. Essentially, some of the questions that we received were asking for ridership data from the MBTA. That's not information that we have because it's not information that the MBTA counts. So our intrepid chair has been to the very, very late-night train and the very, very early-morning train. It is not a representative sample, but he did, he did go to check out the ridership, and there really wasn't any. So I guess I'd just like to say, this is intended to be a pilot. This is not intended to reduce our service in the long term. It's not intended to push off the quiet zone. We have a long way to go before the quiet zone can be implemented. And we're trying to make things sort of more bearable in the process, in the short term. So there are legitimate concerns that have been raised, So there are legitimate concerns that have been raised and I'm sure we'll hear more of them, but this is really just a suggestion, a potential solution for our short-term issue to help make it easier while we work on a longer-term solution. So if if we all just sort of take everything with a grain of salt, nobody's, nobody's trying to take away our MBTA. We won't let that happen. But we're working with the potential solutions that we have on our table, so.
Awesome. Yes.
Mr. Chair, so regarding ridership, I did find some limited data on ridership from the MBTA from spring 2018. So it's, it's a little old, it's pre-pandemic, which is maybe actually good because pandemic changed things a lot.
But they added these trains after.
Exactly. So so the latest data we have is for weekend, weekdays only, excuse me. And in spring 2018, the schedule was different. So the last train coming into Needham arrived at Needham Heights at midnight, so a little bit earlier. And there were, on average, two passengers who got off at the center in the heights on that train, per train. The earliest train at the time was the 6:05. Now there's a 5:05. On the 6:05, there were, on average, 32 passengers who got on between Needham Heights and Needham Center. So we don't know what the earlier 5:05 train is right now and we don't know the ridership on the weekends. Also, what's unclear to me is what pilot means in this context. I don't know how easily train traffic can be turned on and off, so I think that's something we need to clarify.
Well, in our meeting, in our meeting with the MBTA, they did mention that they change schedules on a six-month cycle. So you don't need to change it every time, but you can't, changes can be made at that time and only at that time. So if we were to make this change, I think we had discussed the potential of early fall change and then you, it would go throughout the winter and we would evaluate and then see what we wanted to do and, and, you know, see how our our quiet zone progress was progressing. I mean, none of this is permanent, is the point, although clearly there is a chunk of time that it's involved.
And it's also up to the MBTA. I mean, we, you know, we can talk to them and we can request certain services, but this is all up to.
Right. Our requests have been denied in the past.
There is, there is one aspect of this that I think deserves some consideration because I think it constitutes real service. The last train on the weekends at 10:15 only comes in to Needham a little bit before midnight. If we eliminate that train, then the last train out of Boston will be at 7:15 p.m., which means you cannot have dinner in Boston and come home on the train. So I think that particular last weekend train might not be something we need to eliminate the weekend.
On the weekend only.
On the weekend only. Because it would force you, no, it rolls you back to 7:15. So I don't know that we would necessarily, on a Saturday night, want to eliminate that 10:15 train, which doesn't even get in that late. It would make it, if we kept the 10:15 on the weekends, it would be similar to the weekday schedule with the last train eliminated, if that makes sense. Because it, the last train out of Boston during the week would then be around the same time.
I do think that we're assuming that the MBTA will sculpt this schedule surgically the way we want it, which may not be the case. So we, we need to just, we're going to have to roll with this a little bit to see what is really possible, but I agree with you.
We could ask not to have that one eliminated.
So I think the possibility here is we would welcome feedback from people about the 10:15 train on the weekends and whether you would like to see that stay or not stay. So that's the question that's on the table, one of them.
Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to welcome people to come up and speak. I ask that you give your name and your address and say it slowly and clearly, so because it goes into the minutes. And then we're going to suggest three minutes. I don't go, we're not timing. You can have a timer, but stick to three minutes, okay?
And not too repetitive. You can just quickly.
We want to give everyone a chance to comment.
So.
So if someone's already said your point, second it perhaps, but keep your comments short.
Now, I'm sensing he wants to speak first.
I volunteer. That's okay.
If I'll just catch my eye wave as I'll call you up or stand, whatever. He's bilingual. Yes, please.
Thank you. My name is Dave Horrigan and I have lived in Needham for more than 20 years. I have seen the train horn issue develop into perhaps the town's greatest problem during that period. Mary Ann Cooley's quote in the Needham Observer article succinctly captures the severity of the issue. Quote, "In Needham, that means that during the week, there are precisely four hours that people can sleep. It's a huge burden in this town. And whether that burden is borne by half the town or a small community, it is a stain on the town. I must say that the proposal to make Needham Junction a terminal for the very early and very late trains is not a well-informed or effective, or effective solution. As I rode the train to work yesterday, it struck me that Needham Junction, of all the stations on the Needham Line, is the least suited to serve as a terminal, given the number of houses directly abutting the tracks with no buffering space to protect against the harms of long-idling diesel train engines. And the MBTA is not here to answer our questions. No changes should be implemented without the MBTA serving their duty to provide a public hearing with the residents of this town. The town should insist that there be a health and environmental study done before subjecting any residents to long-idling diesel train engines in their backyards. It has been disheartening to see divisive dialogue on this topic on social media prompted by a proposal that has clear winners and losers, but I prefer to look at the principles around which the town seems united. We value public transportation, not just for us here in Needham, but for the larger communities in which we live. We support initiatives that make our communities safer, quieter, greener, and healthier. Many of us were surprised to learn that the very early and very late trains in question transport zero to very few riders. The most recent data shows that the last train to Needham transported, on average, just five Needham riders and only 13 riders across the entire line. And since then, the MBTA added even later and even earlier trains, which also seem to be largely running empty or with few riders. Why are we running long diesel trains for such a small number of riders? The MBTA has implemented shuttle service from Needham to Forest Hills to replace the trains during maintenance work in June. That same shuttle service seems a much better fit for that very early morning and very late night transit demand, a solution that is quieter, safer, greener, and healthier than what is proposed and what is being and what is even in place today. And it maintains current levels of public transit service for everyone. That's equity. It would alleviate the worst of the train horn noise problem immediately, perhaps expanding our four-hour window for sleep to six, seven, maybe even eight hours for everyone. That's equity. Let's hold the MBTA accountable for safer, quieter, greener, healthier solutions to our public transit needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Yes, I'm, come on up, please.
Sue Horton, and I live at 757 Highland Ave. Good night. It seems like we're going to have to put up with this noise problem for quite a while until the quiet zone goes through, which I am happy it's going to at some point. What I've noticed is some of the conductors come up, and you can hear them from the center up to the heights, and do practically the whole way, long, loud, like they're angry. And they just keep it up. Other conductors will, and not too many of them, will do it a lot quieter. In fact, last night, there was one that did it quieter and it was, it didn't wake me up for, for once. I just think, I mean, if the T could just have conductors be a little more respectful and not do it that loud, that long.
Sue, do you have an opinion on the pilot?
Was that?
Do you have an opinion on the pilot?
Um, I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference, actually, because in Needham Heights, the train still leaves at like a little around 1:00 to go back, especially in the evening one. And then in the morning, it might make a little difference, but not that much, I don't think.
So the one at 1:00 in the morning wouldn't come as far as Needham Heights?
Right. That would be, I mean, yeah, that would be a little bit helpful, I think, but not. I still think if they could do the horns quieter, that would be the most help.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Kevin, I don't, we're trying not to really engage in a dialogue, but I do, while everybody's here, I want to be clear about the horns. There is actually a federal mandate for the volume of the level of sound on the horns. It is actually a very high level, probably higher than we're even used to hearing, and that is what's mandated. So it's something that we haven't had a lot of discussion with the MBTA about, other than saying we, we prefer them when they're quieter, but the answer is that's not what the drivers are supposed to do. So, so we can't ask that they do what's mandated, or we would not be happy if they did what's mandated. It would be a worse situation than what we currently have. So, just so people know.
Mr. Chairman. Ricklinetta Precinct D, 15 Oak Street, here in Needham. Thank you for holding this session and the attention you're currently giving to what I have come to see is a clear health hazard. I reference my comments as temporary because it's not too distant future. I sincerely hope that the newly implemented quiet zone will render this particular problem to a place of peace and quiet. Nonetheless, I for one certainly enjoy adding one hour of uninterrupted sleep to my current three and a half hours each night, and your proposal is certainly in the right direction. So thank you. However, I cannot justify entertaining this extra hour if it's at the expense of fellow residents living near the Junction. So in light of this, I have an observation and a couple of suggestions. My third-floor balcony sits 40 feet from the tracks at the Oak Street Crossing, and as a train passes, I can see directly into every car and every train. And from my balcony, I oftentimes wave with the engineers and I assure you I use all five fingers when I do that. I would like to see an actual utilization review of riders who get on and off at Needham between Hersi and the Heights, and I know I've heard it's difficult, but I think, I think we need to demand that if we can begin to study this issue thoroughly. My analysis, although anecdotal, I believe paints a rather interesting picture of the situation, and the utilization review would afford my data some solid observation. As a general rule, after 8:00 p.m. through Monday through Friday, the trains passing by my balcony on Oak Street and traveling on their way to the Heights are usually empty. Oftentimes, there'll be two or three cars that are darkened, and the one or two cars remaining lit will have no one in them. At most of the time during the morning, I'm sorry, at most, for the same period of time, there are four or five people riding into South Station on the same train. Now, I'm a firm believer of public transportation, and it seems to me that this very expensive and loud resource, at least the times I'm referencing, seem to be terribly underutilized in its current form. In the time between now and the implementation of the quiet zone, may I suggest we explore three temporary possibilities in light of your current proposal. The first one, and I know we've talked about this, I'm going to push it hard, that the MBTA repurpose its safety feature and allow its trains to return to South Station from Hersi while having first to pass by the Junction to trigger the mechanism. This would allow the train's engine to stand idle in the middle of the golf course or houses are a distance away. Second, after 8:00 p.m. and before 5:30 a.m., given the low utilization, use a hybrid vehicle or van, a small bus, to carry the few folks back and forth from Hersi Stop to the remaining three Needham Stops. It's just like the MBA is doing currently, albeit all day long, as it does maintenance on its line in the month of June. If these first two suggested modifications to the proposal fall upon MBTA's deaf ears, let me suggest a temporary fallback position that makes no mechanical or logistical changes whatsoever, costs nothing, and affects everyone positively. Currently, there seems to be no correlation between the length and the volume of the whistle and the time of day in which it's blown. As I observe from my balcony, each engineer is free to sound the whistle as they see fit, whether at 12:00 noon or 12:00 midnight. So engineers, some engineers are vastly more sensitive to the time of day they blow their whistle than others. In light of this, may I suggest some uniformity? I know and I can appreciate the federal law, but there is a significant difference between a train speeding 50-plus odd miles an hour, blowing its whistle sequence, it passes through a town in Kansas, as opposed to a commuter train stopping, then going between Needham's four stops at 10 miles an hour. So I suggest, from 8:00 p.m. to the last run of the day, and from the first run of the day to 6:30 a.m., that each whistle sequence of two long, one short, one long, be dramatically shortened and the volume lowered. This would greatly lower the noise for everyone and not interrupt and or dismiss service for anyone. Thank her for the opportunity to share these reflections. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Rushka. I live at 21 Rosemary Street. The town will consider a pilot program under which drivers planning to travel on town roads between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. would not be allowed to park at their homes. Instead, they can park at an off-site area one mile away and walk the remaining distance. The intent of the pilot is to reduce traffic noise in unsafe conditions on town roads. This will have a minimal impact as traffic is typically light at these hours compared to rush hour. Oh, I'm sorry, this proposal is not about drivers, it's about the trains. The challenge we have is that our approach to automobiles is best characterized as obsequious servitude, regardless of any negative externalities. On the other hand, our approach to public transit is at best begrudging tolerance. I urge you, flip the script. Let's not talk about reducing service, let's talk about expanding service. Referring back to the absurd hypothetical situation that I opened with, I hope you will oppose any changes that reduce public transit with the same fervent passion that you would oppose the curtailment of your ability to drive your car through town. I challenge you to send a clear message. You can rely on public transit, whether you live in Needham, whether you work in Needham, whether you visit Needham, the town has your back. Transit will be there when you need it. We will do everything we can to ensure that the transit is there. Thank you and have a good night.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi there. My name is Craig Idlebrook. I'm at 64 Galen Road. I think it's just, I, my neighbors were, were great and let us know about this, and so it was, it's great to start to get the facts, but I feel like there's still a lot of questions I have. Like, I'm not opposed to the idea that we might, you know, because we live right near Needham Junction, that we might have to have changes and that there might be more trains or fewer trains in the future. I just would like to know that whether or not, like, what is the impact going to be? How much more idling will there be? You know, how many more people will be near idling trains? Will it be, like, when you discuss the idea of, that it would reduce this terrible idling at 2:30 in the morning in, in the winter, is that going to be a good trade-off? Like, and so I would just love to have some hard, I don't know, I know you all can't make those facts materialize and the MBTA is like a black box, but it would be good to see if we could have more, more of an understanding what the trade-off is. Like, I'm willing, well, I'm fairly willing myself, but I'm not speaking for anyone else in my neighborhood, to shoulder some of that, you know, idling if it means that other people are, or the whole community is going to have cleaner air in general. Or for instance, maybe if it's, if it's really 2:30 in the morning in the winter, maybe we can trade off. And so then in the winter months, they come to the Junction more. In the summer months, they come to, they go back to where they, the other place, Highlands area. So it's just, it would just, I guess, overall, it would be good to just have hard data to say, this is how, this is going, this is what's, this is who's being impacted now, this is how many tons of fumes are coming out now, and this is what will feed the change. And so we can evaluate and see if that's worth it. So, that's it. Next, Craig.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there's some, someone online. Oh, all right. Good. Thank you, Josh. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Marcia Fearing. I am a resident in the Heights, and I thank you so much for your thoughtful approach to a terrific stopgap proposal until we get to a quiet zone. It is a misnomer to think that the only residentials that would be impacted would be those folks that reside at Junction, largely single-family homes. There are multiple, multiple tenancies in the Heights region, and so not only do you reduce the noise pollution for the town at large, which is significant, but you also reduce selected idling in Heights. So, so you make a more equitable distribution of the idling. Now, I hope in the future, we will certainly work hard to reduce idling of diesel engines in general. And I've run, from my experience in the military, I have a lot of familiarity with NIOSH and noise and has public health risks. And I don't feel that anyone in Needham should bear the brunt of the diesel idling because these noise thresholds often exceed 85 decibels, and that is consistent with sensory neurohearing loss, and that is clear pollution to our community. However, in the interim, I really, really appreciate the thoughtful approach that this group has put together as a stopgap, and that's going to do a lot for sleep disruption. I would suggest you keep it simple, kiss, like we say in the military, and you just say, end the first, end the last. I mean, do the transitions on the bookends. I, I think that if the real goal of public transportation is to promote work, Saturday night is impacting limited workers for the most part. And so I I think that if the real goal of public transportation is to promote work, Saturday night is impacting limited workers for the most part. And so I thank you very much for this, and I highly support your proposition, as do the 57 people who live in my immediate encatchment area. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
We have someone online.
There is someone online. I'm going to jump to them. JP, you want to bring them on?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
These are very quiet.
Can we turn it up a little bit?
It would be the Needham channel.
Hey there. David Genert. Can everyone hear me okay?
No.
Your name again?
My name is David Genert. I'm a resident at 37 Galen Road. One of the houses directly behind the Junction Station. So are you looking across, up across the tracks from the station platform? We're one of those houses that are right there. So I definitely appreciate the comments that we've already heard from people mentioning people at the Junction who may be affected by pollution. And that is definitely my family. So the idling engines, they stop right behind my house and that of an next-door neighbor. I estimate it's between 20 and 30 meters from our house and that of an apartment complex directly across the Duncan Road. So I'd briefly like to talk about the potential health impacts from potential increased pollution that these proposed changes may have for me and neighbors. So currently, the current schedule brings 34 trains through the Junction Station daily. The idle between, I would say, 20 seconds and one minute at a time. So I just made, on average, if you say 30 seconds, there's a total of 15 minutes of train idling currently per day. And this proposal is supposed to add, I've seen estimates of 15 men idle on either end, so this would essentially triple the total idle time that we have here at the Junction. A study has shown that diesel electric locomotive generate more particulate pollution from a long idle, as this proposal suggests, compared to if they begin from a short idle or continuous load. So the total emissions generated by the diesel would in fact be more than triple what the current short idling schedule allows for. So both WHO and US Department of Health and Human Services classify diesel exhaust as carcinogenic and classify children, in instance, in particular, as susceptible population to airborne pollution. So just looking at the immediate vicinity to the ones by the Junction neighborhood, five of the eight closest houses on Galen Road alone, we have young children. And so there are many vulnerable residents that could be affected by changes just in our little neighborhood. So another study measured pollution at a residence in Seattle that is 30 meters from a passenger rail line. And they found, in that setting, each individual train passing by, not even idling, but passing by that house, generated spikes of four to five times above background levels of carbon dioxide and particulate matter. As the proposed idling would almost certainly generate similar or greater for Duncan residents. That same study indicated that a 50% increase in train traffic would elevate particulate levels above safe levels defined by US Air Safety Authority. The situation at the Junction would of course have differences in the number of trains and speeds and wind patterns even. But it should be clear from these researchers that an increase in train traffic has a potential to increase air pollution at our nearby residences to unsafe levels. And so the MBTA in Needham really have the responsibility to ensure that any additional pollution introduced by these measures falls within safe levels. And so actually, as has been said by several others already, we need more information. So can the MBTA in Needham assure residents at the Junction that the proposed changes do not cause unsafe living conditions?
David, you know, David, you're like over three minutes, and you're starting to break up, too.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Best of the baby. I'm sorry. Hold on. Do you wish to speak? Then I'll get to you. Hold on. First. No, no, no. Hold on one sec. You first. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Holly Horrigan. I'm a Needham resident for more than 20 years, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. Couple points that I just wanted to touch upon that were brought up by other people who have already commented. It's actually pretty stunning to see the 2018 data showing that the late train into Needham only has 13 people end to end from South Boston to Needham. So I don't know who looks at that data and says, let's add another giant diesel train to the schedule. I really wish the MBTA had been here so that we could ask them that question. Another thing that's come up with all the comments is that we all support public transportation. We all want a cleaner, greener, healthier Needham. Replacing the giant diesel trains with a shuttle, which we know how to do, would really address all the problems for everyone. It would be cleaner, greener, quieter, equitable, and meet the public transportation goals that have been raised here today. The other thing that I wanted to bring up that's been a little confusing, I think, is the question of the permanence of this pilot program. In 2020, former selectman John Bullion had suggested that the ultimate plan for the town was to eliminate the train line between the Junction and the Heights, and that the rail would be paved over and ultimately be replaced with a multimodal form of transportation. I am wondering if this is the first step towards that plan? If that plan is still working in the background somewhere, I'd love to hear from the Select Board if that's still under consideration or not. Then I looked at the FAQs that were provided by the Select Board tonight regarding permanence. And so the FAQ document says, "Will the service changes be permanent?" is the question. And the answer that you guys provided is, "If the modifications are implemented, the town may ask the MBTA to restore the trains in the future, such as after the implementation of a quiet zone." But I read that, and I say, what does, what does that mean? May, maybe, might, could, when? And to me, it sounds pretty permanent. And so there's a change of use suggestion for the Junction that sounds like it's permanent, even though the Junction residents are also being promised that it might just be temporary. So I'd love for you guys to address exactly what you mean by stopgap pilot, short-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. I'm sorry. Who else? Yes, I'm sorry. The man in front of me, yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mike Sworfski. I live on 31 Galen Road. My neighbor Dave was just on the TV, and he sent a very detailed email going through exactly what he said there. But I can throw a baseball to people eating ice cream at the Junction. I'm that close to the Junction. So when the train stops, I, my house shakes. My house literally shakes. So it was really disappointing to hear your comments upfront, really talking about how the schedule changes could affect people and not address how it's going to affect that small community that lives right there. And from what I can see, there aren't immediate residential areas within two blocks of the Heights, right? Where it stops and idles. I mean, my daughter has asthma. If she's playing in my backyard, I don't know if I can let her do that, if we do this, without a study on pollution. Because per Dave, who was on TV, he did a lot of research. He's a scientist. He knows the impact, and he says the impact is too great for a child, especially with asthma, to deal with it. So I just want to make sure everyone on Galen is heard. I know a lot of my neighbors are here and want to make sure that that is heard, right? The noise, the house shaking, it's going to happen. If they idle for 15 minutes, that's probably lucky. I mean, what is the consistent time of actual idling? And just understanding the pollution effects is really critical to my neighborhood. Thank you.
I'm the next-door neighbor. And the sequence of it makes sense?
Sure.
Hi. David Jordan, 21 Galen. I would argue that I'm directly behind.
But you wouldn't throw baseballs at people at the Junction.
Yes, yes. I know. We're all right there at Needham Junction, right there where the ice cream is served. I, my wife had sent an email as well with some of what I came to discuss. But, you know, my greatest concern is I do have three young children, and I am most concerned about the air quality. As it stands right now, with the short idling time that does exist, our carbon dioxide detectors do go off at certain high points in the season. And with an increased idling, I can all but guarantee, both scientifically but in our own kind of anecdotal information that happens at my household, that carbon dioxide levels will reach unsafe levels. And, you know, we will bring our concern to that next level if we were to reach that at some point. The next thing is where it chooses to idle and where it stops. The elevation of the train into my backyard and into our windows and bathrooms and into the areas that my children play and where my children change and get ready in the morning is immediately into our backyard and into the windows of our house. This is not a great concern during when things are passing and people are loading, but if we are at sustained high stop times, that is a great concern for us as well. I'm also, on those Saturday nights while it's low volume, I am, you know, one of, one of two or three, three or four houses that are probably the most impacted by the loitering that occurs directly behind Needham Junction. That space specifically is not a space that's seen from the street or by the police that pass by. Even the ones that patrol and stop will need to physically get out of the car and move back behind Needham Junction. So we're, oftentimes, my children are also exposed to different drug activity and other loitering activity that occurs behind Needham Junction late at night and sometimes early, early in the morning as well. So with that, those are kind of my concerns, and I appreciate your time.
David, thank you very much. Yes. Yes, John. Come on. Good evening.
My name's Ed Cosgrove. I'm a 53-year resident of Needham. I live on 17 Laurel Drive, Precinct D, not far from Galen Road. So I support all of their concerns. My concern is a little different. If we stop the train from going to the center in the Heights, the early train and the late train, the fact is, we're going to have the people who would have taken that train suddenly have to go to the Junction Station to get the train. They're going to drive there, and they're going to park there. Now, prior to the pandemic, and it's beginning to come back, by, prior to the pandemic, by 8:00 or 8:15 in the morning, that parking lots at the station were full. It's coming back. That's going to happen again. And what happens is, people then park on the streets, and they come up on my end of Laurel Drive. I'm sure they probably would go up on Galen Road, and they would park as well. And I think that's an unintended consequence of this action. And so I just am concerned about that. But I am also concerned about, from the health perspective, about all the particulates coming out of those diesel engines. Because when we, when we were talking about allowing Modera to be, Moderna to be built on Greendale Avenue, that was one of the concerns that the Board of Health had over those apartments and all the particulates coming from the cars on 128. And we required certain ventilation changes and everything else. And that can't be done in our neighborhoods. So I just wanted to raise that point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Ian Gresh. 164 Laurel Drive, also Precinct D, just up there. And I apparently am the only one here who actually takes the early morning trains. So I have a slightly different perspective on them in that they are of value to me. And I would imagine, I take the early morning train so that I can go into work very early and then leave early and pick up my son from school. And now I understand that Needham Junction is still going to be served, so in my own narrow interest, it doesn't affect me. But I can't believe I'm the only person who is relying on these trains. And there may be 10 people, whatever it is. But I know when the train gets to Needham Junction, it is not empty. There are people on these early morning trains, and they are relying on these trains. And it's fine to say, oh, we'll take a shuttle bus. You know, but the trains are much more reliable than shuttle buses. And, you know, the other fallacy is that, oh, well, we can use a shuttle bus to Forest Hills. I don't know if any of you have ridden the trains, but the trains don't just stop at Needham. They stop at West Roxbury and all the other stations beyond that, and people use them. So you can't fit the people who would need to be transported on one shuttle bus. So now we're running two train services, or we're running a special shuttle bus for Needham. It's, 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 well, it just boggles the mind. So I, I don't know what the solution is. I mean, eventually, technology will come along, and the diesel engines will go away. And, you know, but it's unrealistic to believe that's going to happen anytime soon, and given that the MBTA never seems to make any money. So we're just lucky they still come here. And that's all I have to say. I am in support of these trains, even the early morning trains. And I understand they make a noise and people are irritated. But I don't see many people here who are relying on these trains to get to work. There's a lot of people who are complaining because they can't sleep. But what about the people who need those trains? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Hi. My name is Sherri Walker, and I've lived in Union for 44 years. And I live on Galen Road. And I live where the train pulls in and stops to let everybody on and off. So it's literally on the other side of my fence. So I've raised my five kids there. It's a great place to be. I was there when they stopped the first round of trains, and they tore all the train track up, and they put the new train in. And I even have the poster on my wall downstairs. The trains are back. But I have to say that this very early morning train and the very late train does bother my family. My children are long gone, but my grandchildren live with me. And there are six of them. They need to sleep, and so does Grandma. And not only that, I'm there 24 hours a day. I run my business there. I have family childcare. And the children love the trains. They love to see them. I don't like the noise. I jokingly tell everybody, they all learn their numbers by seeing the numbers on the I jokingly tell everybody, they all learn their numbers by seeing the numbers on the train, because we say, what number was that train? Then they know. And I like the train, I use the train, but I think, you know, and I understand this gentleman that likes to go early and come home late, and that's fine. But I think what they need to do, and what they were supposed to do when the train came back, was my understanding, in 1987, they were supposed to take that train across the bridge and idle behind Roach Brothers. That was what was supposed to happen. That's what we were told. I've been down this road before, and it never happened. So my, like, compromise is, let's, if we're going to do it, and we're going to have these trains very early, very late, let's have them pull over there, stop, let people on or off, idle however long you're going to idle behind Roach Brothers, where there's all businesses and no houses. You've heard from at least four or five people that live on Galen Road that really don't want them in our backyard. I mean, I knew, we knew the train was there when we bought the house. We liked the train, that's fine. But that's my suggestion for something to fight for in the future. I don't want to get rid of the trains, but I think maybe that's the easiest solution. Pull up another, you know, few hundred feet. Okay?
Thank you very much.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else from Galen Road? I mean, do you have a permit for block party?
Yes, we do. Okay.
Hi.
No, I know, but you had your hand up, you wanted to go.
Hello, I'm Nicholas Lakasha, and I live at 1 Dartmouth Avenue. I just want to say that I benefit from the commuter rail. I frequently go into town, hang out with friends, and I take the last train home. And I live just a 10-minute walk away from Needham Heights, so it's very convenient for me. But I'm very sympathetic to the fact that the train is very loud. I hear it from my house. It's not very disruptive, but I can imagine if you're right there by the train, it's pretty annoying. So, but at the same time, I don't think that service cuts, I don't like the idea of service cuts without some sort of compromise of like an increase of services elsewhere. And I don't know how much control the Select Board has of, you know, increasing services or being advocates of, you know, increasing service. But I could see, A, having blue bikes in Needham would help me a lot, because Newton Highlands is just a short bike ride away from Needham. So that would allow me to take the green line into Boston and then bike home from Newton Highlands. And so that would be very convenient for me, and I imagine other people using the MBTA. And then, two, the 59 bus does not run very late. And so I was just thinking the other day, I was going to go into town, get dinner with my brother, and then we'd take the green line back home, but the bus ended like two hours after we would have gotten back, or before we would have gotten back. So that was just not very convenient for us. And I think it's a little silly that the bus ends at 7:00 PM. And three, this may be very out of the, you know, the boundaries of this committee, but all this talk of like changing the infrastructure of the commuter rail, like the crossings for the quiet zone, or like all that. I, for one, I would love to see, because it's the same tracks. I mean, the orange line stops at Forest Hills, and there was a proposal in the 70s to do it all the way to Needham Heights. So I, for one, would love to see advocacy for the orange line perhaps going all the way until Needham Heights, as was intended. And that would not have the diesel engines, that wouldn't have all the noise. And I feel like that would be a satisfactory solution to all parties, because people who want to go in early to Boston still are able to do that, and then people don't have to deal with the noise. So obviously, that is, you know, very high, you know, dream solution, because I, you know, I love public transportation. But I just wanted to put that out there. I didn't know who was ever considered. So those are all the points that I have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes.
I just have a question. How long does the train idle when it is either in the Heights or anywhere?
30 minutes.
Hold on, one sec. You actually have to speak to bike so they can hear you.
And we're not, we're not.
Yeah.
Do your question and answer.
I'm Bill Lenahan from on Hoyden Street in Needham. How long does the train idle at the Heights right now, at night when it comes out of service?
30 minutes.
And is that a variable? Can it be varied?
Well, all right. I'm happy to answer your question, but we're not kind of supposed to. But you're asking when it comes into the Heights, how long it idles for?
Yes.
I have been told by the conductors, when it comes into the station, they turn around and they would close up at five minutes. They don't idle, they go right back to Boston. That's their plan. And that's, I have seen that. So they do say, they tell me they do that.
Well, then what are we talking about here?
We're talking about in the early morning, before they start up on a schedule.
Okay, well, then, how long does idle in the early morning when it is about?
Sir, we don't have these answers for you.
I don't, I don't.
We appreciate the question, but we don't have the answers.
Could we get together with the MBTA at some, in some fashion?
Right.
That'd be probably the next step to talk to them, those ridiculous, but we don't have all the answers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? JP, anyone online?
Everybody hit their hand up.
Okay. Did any of my distinguished colleagues have any comments, thoughts, or suggestions?
I had one clarifying comment. So in talking about the ridership numbers, you know, say there's a handful of riders on one train on average, we don't know if, and I suspect that they're not always the same riders. So when we're talking about impacts to people, it may not be exactly five people, it may be many people, because, you know, maybe you take the train once late at night. So that's just something to consider.
All right. Sure.
Just on her suggestion of...
Could you come to the microphone, please?
I mean, in your...
Yeah.
Just a quick question. In, in your previous negotiations with the MBTA, is there a reason to her suggestion that just to advance, if they are looking at the junction stop, is there a possibility they could pull forward?
I said something at the start that we've asked them if they can do that. We don't have an answer yet.
Got it. Thank you.
We put that question in.
Thank you. Okay, any comments?
I would just comment that I want to stress that this, these questions, this pilot, it's all an aim of the Select Board to make life a little quieter in Needham. This came, this idea came from the town. So the reason that the MBTA is not here is because we, before we advance this idea, we wanted to check with the people of Needham. So I appreciate that there are lots of unanswered questions, and that we may feel that we need all of the answers in order to make a decision. We're not there yet. What we wanted to do was bring an idea to the town to see if, you know, if it's worth pursuing. So we've had a lot of feedback, and I think that's fantastic, and we really appreciate everyone coming today, regardless of what your opinion is. We want to hear both pro and con. But again, I just want to stress that this is a preliminary idea. It's not, the MBTA isn't here because we have to decide if it's worth moving forward.
Is there any other, is one more comment, or have you closed the hearing?
Yeah, no, no, we're good.
Hello?
Yeah, hello?
Yeah, hi. Am I on the floor?
You are. Your name and address, please.
James McLaughlin, 37 Cedar Springs Lane in Needham. It seems to me that we have two issues here. Noise and contamination from diesel fuels.
I couldn't hear that. Can you repeat that?
James, it's, if your, your audio is very low, so if you could speak up on your end, it might help.
Okay, thank you. It seems to me that we have two issues here. One is noise, and the other is pollution, both of which I am sensitive to. I, my reason for joining the meeting tonight was less of pollution, but more of noise. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, but barely. Speak up.
Barely. Now, now, interestingly enough, I've lived in town for 52 years at two different addresses. One, very close to the train line on Wilshire Park, where we got a lot of soot, and I'll leave it at that. I'm more interested in the noise issue. And I know there's a federal regulation with regard to crossings. But I also know that there are towns in Massachusetts that do not require trains to blow their horns at crossings. And then the only other, the only other comment I would have is an observation that when I am stopped in traffic, particularly at the Heights, but in other parts of town, by the time they blow the whistle, they're through the intersection, which has gates down, lights on, bells ringing, and everything else that would alert people to, alert people to not go through the train crossing. I mean, it's simple stupid in that regard, as are most of our federal laws, because it's one size fits all. I don't know if we have any, every, any mechanism to reduce or eliminate the noise of the whistles being blown. I can't comment any further on the pollution aspect because I'm not close to it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
No, I think I do just want to clarify one thing. I think, I think we should close, but people should know that, in fact, in the Heights, at the High Platform, where the engine ends up, based on the High Platform, is in a residential area, right? It is exactly the same. I know that there's this notion that it's in, in a commercial area, but the answer is the train and the engine is in a residential area of the Heights, and people should just be aware of that.
All right, yes.
Yes, I can.
Okay, very, very quick.
I, yeah.
Bob Baker, 57 Galen Road. Just want to say the one...
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Yeah, I got to come up here. 57 Galen Road, just, just the one difference. Yeah, yeah. Needham Heights, height of land, it's the top of the hill. Needham Junction, there's a lot of stuff above it, and that's why all that particulate is drifting up the hill to both Galen Road and Laurel. And there's also public housing across, right across the street from this.
We're good? Yes, please, come.
Ellen Baker, 57 Galen Road. And I just want to end by saying, I hate that this becomes a split, that people from either side are saying, no, not us, not in my backyard, not in yours. And I hate to see a divisive situation when what we all want is to be healthy and to have public transportation.
Amen. Thank you very much. Great. I'm going to close the hearing. So thank you, thank you, everyone who spoke, commenter, appreciate their bright, thoughtful. So thank you very much.
Thank you for listening. Yeah, thank you for agreeing with me.
All right. So that concludes this public hearing. We are not taking a vote, we're just, this is just a chew on, so thank you very much. It's just for discussion only. The next issue we have is approval of a sale of bond anticipation note. Hold on, wait, where's someone going? This is fascinating.
Volunteer to be here, all right.
Yes, yeah.
All right.
Do you guys want to break?
Thank you guys so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You want to take a break?
I'd rather finish, if we could.
All right. All right. This is a break. Yeah, you guys? Thank you, thank you so much.
Sorry.
All right. I welcome Dave Davison, the Deputy Town Manager, Director of Finance, and Elise Gershla.
Yeah, I know. Pearls of wisdom.
How's the dog?
Good.
I'm very excited to see our new town clerk here also ensuring that we're not voting under duress. Always a good thing.
Thank you very much. Yes. Thank you, Louise, for being... All right, we're going to review the results of the bond anticipation note sale and discuss future borrowings with the board. Dave Davison?
Yes. We're here this evening to, one, we're pleased to tell you that the town received four bids on its bond anticipation note, and they were very competitive bids. The range in interest rates, in terms of the value that we're looking at, is what is the net interest cost, ranged from 3.718 to the highest of 4.282, or basically a spread of about a half a percent. Compare that to the last two notes that we've been before the board back in, back in June and March, and the spread between the highest and lowest bid was 1.34% and 1.2%. So even though the coupon rates and the rates that we were looking at, the bidders were all either four and a quarter, four and a half, which are slightly lower than they were in those previous two bids, the margin is tightening up. So that's certainly showing that where interest rates are, there's more certainty in, in terms of the short term where interest rates will be, since you had four bidders very close in the same rates. The winning bidder was Piper Sandler and Company, and they offered a rate of 4.25% with the premium, the premium is what they paid to the town of $21,958, with that 3.718% net interest cost. The note will mature in December, and when that happens, and actually prior to that date, the town will be going out to bid again. We will make a determination in October of whether we'll do permanent financing, that is converting to a bond, or extending it into another note for another period of time. The determinants that come into that, when we do that, is the progress in the projects that we're funding, what is happening in the interest rate market at the time, and what the forecast looks to be six months to a year out, the amount that the town needs to borrow, because those also impact the cost of doing an issue, whether or not we have to get a rating or not in this instance. Because the duration of this note was short enough that our prior credit rating was sufficient for the market to competitively bid on our notes. When we have to get a credit rating, that adds substantial cost to the issuance. The rating is something that the town pays for, although the benefactor of that are the people who are buying the notes from us. The legal opinions are always more expensive on a bond than they are on a note, and the reason for that is the period of time which bond counsel effectively is on the hook for their opinion is longer, so there's greater risk. So there's a greater cost associated with issuing a bond than issuing a note. So those are some of the factors that we look at in terms of, do we do a bond, do we do a note? Other factors that come into play is, of course, what we have budgeted to pay for debt, the short-term interest expense in the principal paydowns. And those will factor in what amounts that we may need to renew, and those amounts that can be converted, and those amounts that can be paid down. And again, back in October, we'll make a determination if we're looking at a long-term or a short-term borrowing, and the amount. And we will also know at that time how much we would be paying down... And we will also know at that time how much we would be paying down of this note when it matures. The results and everything to bring this to market is done with the town's financial advisor and all the work our treasurer does in preparing one of the documents that the board will be voting is our representations of the accuracy of the, what's known as the official statement, which is what the rating agency relies upon and the bidders on the town's notes, as well as maybe the end purchaser of the, of the notes in the secondary market. So, it's very time-consuming to put it together. And it's useful information. I've, I've heard comments, particularly in the last couple of years with the changeover in the board and so many new faces, that they've learned more about the town of Needham from the official statements than they have from many other documents. So, with that, Mr. Chair, we're happy to take any questions the board may have and ask for the board's support to approve the sale.
Thank you for doing this. Going through it, it's, it's dense. Any of my colleagues have comments or questions?
I, I would just note that I was, as you indicated, pleased to see that it looks like there's more certainty and that the certainty, while it's not significantly down, is at least on the lower end of what we've paid lately. So, the direction is helpful.
I also enjoy reading the official statement. I noticed that the, this issuance is about $3 million higher than the two band notes from spring, correct, last year. Is that, I guess you, you talked about like projects. The one I'm thinking about is Emory Grofer. I think that was originally anticipated to be finished like around, like the summer and then is closer going to be December. Does that timeline factor into how much goes into a note versus a bond?
That's one of the factors. But the, in the, in December, we'll be looking at more of the costs associated with the rooftop units, as well as the waters, the water projects. Those will have more of an impact in the decision of bonding than the, than the Emory Grofer project.
Okay. Okay. I was a little curious. Some of this stuff was like, these are projects that were passed like a year ago in town meeting, right? Is this, this isn't just spring stuff, recent stuff. Some of this, they've been going, so this is what, as it comes through the pipeline, we start paying them off?
The, the, the borrowing is, we borrow as we need cash to pay the contractors who are doing the work.
Okay.
And the projects, of course, take time to complete. And construction projects can be anywhere from six months to three years. In fact, it was only last December that we closed out the Public Safety Building project. They take a long time. And there are holdbacks from, from the contractor until the warranty periods run out and such. But we can't borrow that money until we pay it because there are IRS rules that the monies that are borrowed have to be expended out of the town's treasury within a certain timeframe. So, if we borrow money that we're not going to pay out for a year, we could run afoul of arbitrage issues. And there are penalties, rebates that have to be provided to the IRS. And the ultimate penalty is that if it's seen in bad faith, the IRS could actually take away the tax exemption, which would impact all the bondholders, which would have an action against you. And you'll be signing some documents that say that you wouldn't do those sort of things.
Let's make sure that never happens.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Well.
So, Mr. Chair.
I would welcome, yes.
I would move that the Select Board vote to approve the bond anticipation note financing with the motions as presented in our materials for this evening's meeting.
Is, fine, but do we have to spell out motion A, B, C, and D? Or can we do Mary Anne's abridged version?
If the board is comfortable in voting them all, they can do that, considering that they were published and online for, for anybody to see.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? This vote. Are those in favor? Vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So, Mr. Chairman, with that vote, our treasurer has documents for you all to sign. And the town clerk is here to witness that you're actually doing that at your own free will. And in fact, one of the documents that the town clerk also has to sign is she's attesting to that very fact that your signatures are genuine.
Okay, this is your. You'll be available soon.
Once yourselves.
Mr. Chair, as your sonny knows, just for the benefit of folks that may be listening, specifically what's included in this borrowing authorization is, is cash to pay for water distribution improvements. These are some of the work that's been going on along Central and, and going up towards School Street. The water service connections, removing the lead connections to various properties in town, as noted by Select Board member Levy, the Emory Grofer project. It's, which is more than 70% completed. And we will, again, be hopefully looking at the last major borrowing associated with that being completed this year. The residual will probably be sometime in 2025, probably towards the end of, in next calendar year, 2025. And the rooftop units, these are the rooftop units that are going to be replaced at the Elliott School this year. The, the more expensive part is the Broad Metal School, which will be next summer. There is also a document in there that's just signed by the clerk of the Select Board, attesting to the votes taken.
Is that the special?
I do apologize to the cable channel. I know this is probably ripping TV right now.
Do you want to pass it down to Josh?
The town clerk is satisfied with our answers?
Oh, so there's two copies of each?
That's a good point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Yep, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Now, our job is, yes.
Next word of business, Dave Davison stays in the seat. We'll jump onto set water and sewer rates.
Yes, Mr. Chair, as the board will recall, at your last meeting, you held a public hearing. The Sewer Water Rate Structure Committee came before you to make a report and recommendations. Recognizing that the board would want some options, they provided, based upon the many scenarios that they weighed and considered, there were three alternatives that they presented to the board for consideration. The, the alternative B, alternative D, and alternative G. Major, the committee's leanings were for alternative G, which would effectively increase the step rates, water step rates by approximately 2.23% and would increase the annual service fee by $4 a year. It would also increase the second meter fee by $4 per year. And all the sewer rates would increase at 6.9% each step. And the service fee would also increase by $4 for the year. Important factors of, of that alternative is, one, it wasn't disproportionately putting the burden of the cost of recovery of cost on a particular rate payer. Or, or I know there were some questions that came from the business community, in other words, trying to push more of the burden on the business community. These rates are not structured that way. One that uses less water would be looking at the same percentage increase into that rate. They would pay less because step one is less expensive than step two and step three is more expensive than step two and step four is more expensive. But they'd all be increasing by the same percentage. And the other factor is also increasing the fixed revenue stream and dealing with costs that are not necessarily driven by consumption, but by the mere fact that we have a public utility and there are costs associated with running that, such as meters and billing. And in terms of the various miscellaneous fees, there is a recommendation of no changes to that fee structure. But since it's been a while, usually if something's not changing, it's usually not presented. But it's, I thought that it's been a while since they've actually been before the committee. Just to remind everybody, there are these fees that have not gone up in what they are. And those are like the backflow, testing, cross-connections, the final read fee, direct fee, and temporary water meter installation fees, and belt jobs.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank, thank you to the committee that started this. They had 34 options to look at?
No, it was in the 70s by the time, because more options were.
Wow, okay. Well, thank you. That's a lot of work. Any of my, do my colleagues have questions, comments?
I have a suggestion, maybe. Given the ongoing billing issues, which are unrelated to the, the fee structure, would it be possible to delay implementation of a new fee structure until October 1st? Just to give everyone an extra quarter for everything to settle?
That certainly, the board has that right to do that. That's, that is correct.
Would that, would that be an impediment to the water and sewer operations?
Of, of course, having the rates take effect sooner is better because we'll be able to show the higher revenue that is being generated, which has advantages to us. Taking effect in October, we won't have as much, as much actual data to show what the revenue stream is. So, that could be problematic in terms of the rate, in terms of estimating revenue. Again, as a reminder, that revenue estimates must match what has been appropriated. And the Department of Revenue does not like communities guessing that they're going to generate the money. And they would like to see hard evidence that the rates are generating revenue.
Right. Aren't the reserve, isn't the reserve account almost depleted on this?
And it's not a reserve account. It's not as though you can, the only town meeting can appropriate it. And town meeting appropriated a lot of it, so there's very little left. We're not expecting a significant amount to be recertified next year because, one, it was a wet year last year. And as a result, we did not sell as much water, irrigation water in particular. So, revenues were, are down this year anyways. So, the, so those are going to impact what our actual receipts are in terms of June 30th. Of course, the delay in billing, the, the positive thing is we got all the bills out, which may be a good segue to talk about the billing that we have had. And in terms of, just as a reminder, is the town purchased a new billing and collection system, which includes property taxes, motor vehicle excise tax, general billing, and water and sewer. This was a project that came at an unfortunate time because when we finally were able to secure funding, we were in COVID time. We were all in the parking lot up at Memorial Field, seeking the appropriation to purchase the software. The, the whole procurement process was longer because of COVID and all the restrictions and being able to meet with the different providers and, and make a selection. The, the board is, of course, aware, like in many, with, in part to COVID and part in generational changes, we had a sea change in, in staffing and particularly staffing that is directly involved in this project being success. And the loss of the key people in our IT department actually was one of the, one of the many considerations when the town just recently voted to do the consolidation to have better redundancy for our IT operations with the school department. The turnover in staff in, in the treasurer's office. In fact, the entire department, except for one individual, all left within a short 18-month period. And, including the top person, the treasurer collector, left. And it took almost a year to fill that vacancy, only to lose that person after a few months. And Elise, who was with us tonight, just jumped on board. The assessor, the director of assessing is new, same aspect, lost institutional knowledge and implementation. So, as well as other areas in finance, turnover in key staff in the water and sewer department. So, our resources, and those are the resources, are accounted for implementation. We don't have a C-hole hiring of people coming just to implement. That's not the way government gets to work. It doesn't get that luxury. We have to still do our day-to-day jobs and, and take on the extra task, which I have to say that they, in the water, in treasury, in assessing, and in IT, have been doing very well. The complications with implementation of the water and sewer billing was, was worse because the legacy system failed. That was the, one of the main. That was one of the main reasons we were looking to get a new system. And the failure came because of an overheating problem and the computer died. And the company that we are now using had to accelerate their timeline to get their project. They were not expecting to implement water and sewer in the fall of '23. They were looking at January, not January yet. So they have been working with us to make this development. They also needed to help us recreate our history and put it into the new system because, remember, the computer died. And there was backup information, but it was old technology. And there's, again, one of the major problems. As I say at the layperson, it was green screen technology. And in fact, we brought back a retired IT person, one of our COBOL writers, to assist with some of the work to help the company be able to get the data in order to help us build. So they did a lot of work and a lot of proof. And so that was why the number of months went by that we couldn't build. Didn't have the ability to build. We had to make sure that what was going out was correct. Decision of multiple bills, particularly with the commercial, that was a decision from a public relations standpoint to reassure businesses, for instance, that they were accustomed, that every month they get a bill. They know their rates, what the rate structure is. And there was a concern, and I can appreciate that. Oh, all of a sudden I'm going to have five months' worth of billing on one bill? How do I know I'm not going to pay more than I would have had the bills come out every single month? So that was the decision to print all the bills, have five bills in one envelope and went all at the same time. But everyone can do the math and see that they're being charged no more or less than they would have if the bills came out on time. As a result of that, there was clearly some, they were confused because when people were making payments, some people paid current charges. Others looked at the bottom line of the bill, which was inclusive, the current billing, plus the prior balance of the other bill. All five bills are there. So some people inadvertently, or maybe they wanted to, I'll say inadvertently, overpaid. And then when we sent out the April bills, there were a number of customers that saw our credit balance and confused. Well, it was because they paid more than they had to pay. Telling them keep the money that we credited. They're getting their money as a credit, which reduced the amount that they would have had to pay in April. And in some instances, had a credit balance that carried over to May. So that was one of the issues. We had some accounts that did not convert as well. And there were errors and we had to hold them to make sure that the starting balances were corrected. And in those instances, those were other people that got multiple bills together to get them out. And again, confusion. There weren't informational pieces inserted with the, in particular with the commercial, one explaining why they were receiving five bills, basically stating in much less words than what I just described, why we chose to do five bills at once rather than one bill. And of course, I mentioned that the time to pay the bills was much, was extended as well. Now, it was extended because normally they would have had to pay a bill in November and December and January and February, and they didn't. Then they have to start paying until March or April. But we also extended the timeline that they could pay those bills without penalty. And then the other complication that people have been mentioning, and it's been frustrating and we think it's going to get resolved within the next few weeks, that's the ability to set up with water and sewer, the reoccurring pay, where you can set up and have your account directly debited. And that has been a complication. I think the board may have recalled when I was given the explanation of a number of players. And this is the billing, the billing software is not the company that's the online platform for payments. It's another company that we've been using, Invoice Cloud. And we were transitioning from old, the old legacy system, which files they had to work with, to this system. And they were extracting the wrong data points in their file setup, which was causing people's ability to set up recurring pay to fail because they were pulling in just the bill number and not the customer account number. And the customer account number is the variable that doesn't change, as we know. The bill number changes all the time, which works for anybody who's going in and making a payment each time. That works perfectly. An example is Mass Turnpike. Folks can set up and have the transponder and have their account debited. Or people could be like me, who doesn't want anybody debiting from my account. So I actually get pay-by-play, get the bill, and I go in and log in and there I can just enter the bill number because it's going to be a reoccurring pay. So the same concept. So the bill number works if you're just doing single payments. And that's the best way to assure. The issue about the recurring pay, that was a issue, miscommunication between two different technology companies that's only been acknowledged by all parties and is expected to be repaired within the next couple of weeks. So hopefully that will be going away.
And Mr. Chair, if anyone got caught up in that, the bills were not paid on time, are there any penalties?
There are no penalties. We have the interest turned off and we have not issued any demands and nothing like that would be implemented. And we would certainly send, we will remind folks when the 30-day windows are back into place, but nothing until, nothing until the end of summer.
Just back to the point of delaying the bills. Am I reading this correctly? I'm looking at the chart of alternative G.
Yes.
And I'm looking down at the bottom. And it says annual 1,823.40 and then the alternate G rate 1,930. Is that for the average customer?
That is the average, an average customer. That's the national standard of 12,000 cubic feet of water per year. And that's how comparisons amongst communities is made here in Massachusetts by the MWRA and nationally. The average in need of actual usage is less than 12,000 cubic feet. So it would be slightly less.
So we're talking about an increase of $100 over the course of a year?
12 months, yep.
12 months. That doesn't seem like something shocking to people. Like, it doesn't seem to me that we would need to delay that just because it's a small amount. You know, not a shocking increase.
Sorry, my rationale wasn't because of the increase of the amount. Just there have been a lot of changes already, some that are not anticipated. And it just might be a little helpful for residents to not make more changes right now.
You've already discussed the potentially detrimental effect of delay. Is there any benefit to?
Well, certainly, well, certainly to select board member Levy's comment, giving people a little more time to adjust. And I have to say, I think collector staff and the DBW staff may be appreciative of not having immediately having to explain, well, the change in the rate and the fact that some of the usage is being billed at one rate and some of it's being billed at the higher rate for folks to have usage at the old rate. So usage now in June, usage in July. So there's certainly benefits to that effect as well. So there is. I think I can give the board the flexibility of having the rates take effect on October 1st. I think there are the concerns that I've expressed. I don't think they're going to be dramatically changed. I am very mindful and am reminded almost daily how stressful this has been on the staff. And I think probably for everyone, it probably would be better to have an October 1 start date.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I move that the select board approve the water and sewer rates identified as alternative G and that they be effective October 1st, 2024. That the board approve a septic disposal fee of $85 per 1,000 gallons. And further, that the board approve the following other water and sewer service rates as appearing in the select board packet.
Second.
The date on that was when?
October 1st, 2024.
Any comment?
Dave, I guess I just want to be sure that that is in fact your recommendation.
It is.
All right. Let's have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Crickets. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next stop. I'm a manager.
And I ask Karis to help on this one if you have questions that involve Kelvin and things like that.
Oh, all right, okay.
So we have been approached by residents who are very interested in Dark Sky Initiative and some pending Dark Sky legislation. And talked to the chair and the clerk in the absence of the vice chair about this concept. The part of the legislation is work that would prohibit the Commonwealth from spending public money on light fixtures that don't meet certain standards and that aren't shielded and things like that. Our main recommendation to the board would be whether you would want to take a position, really focusing on Section 3 of the bill, which would require that utility companies actually give a meter for the lights that, the Cobra Head streetlights that we have, were now charged a, it's called a tariff rate. Or in the alternative, a more granular tariff rate than we're paying now. When we had switched over the last decades from mercury vapor to high-pressure sodium to LED, and we significantly lowered the tariff rate that we had. The difference between a metered rate and the tariff rate we have now, it's not as huge as going from the high-pressure sodium to the LED, but it is an acknowledgement of paying for what we're using and not just paying this blanket rate. I'm not sure where the legislation would go and it would have to be, rules would be promulgated by the Energy Agency. But it does seem like something that, when I talked to Karis, who is here, and Gabby, I mean, there are environmental issues associated with the light. But with respect to the metering, this is something that we have, we would prefer to have is that there could be just paying for what we use. So really brought it to the board to see if that's something that made sense to send a letter.
Sure.
I have a question. So the electric company would have to meter every single light?
Or we would.
Would we have to pay for those meters?
Karis, are you there on that one?
I'm here, yep. So right now, we have a control system and all of our lights through a, through a mesh network that's created where all the lights talk to each other and they go back to a central point. And then there is a network communication. My understanding is that mesh system does have a metering capacity in it that could read the utilization of those lights. It would require the utility to accept our metered system as opposed to installing their own meters. I think installing their own meters could be quite an expensive proposition if that's how they want to meet that requirement. The other option they have is that we have a dimming schedule as part of our program. And that is not being factored into our tariff rate. Our tariff rate is based on the conversion of light bulbs only and not that we're dimming the lights overnight in order to save additional energy. So they could come up with a different formula as well that improves our tariff rate.
Right. Thank you. As one, what about the dimming schedule? Questions, comments?
I would support making a change.
What's this?
I would support making the change.
Okay.
And I think continued progress on dark skies is actually fundamentally a good thing, so.
Okay.
Not about this. I mean, I'd like to talk just briefly about the idea of asking our residents to participate in dark sky lighting. I think this is something, just like most of our energy consumption, the light isn't necessarily coming from the town. I know that the town is dark sky compliant. I guess I'd love to throw out there the idea of trying to increase resident participation in the same thing, lights that face downward that are shielded, that are not on all the time. Because I think there's only so much impact that a municipality can have on an issue like this. And I think that the town is already compliant. So reducing our energy costs is a great thing, and I'm totally in favor of that. Keeping the town compliant would also be great. But it does strike me that this is something where our residents really need to participate if we're really to have any kind of dark sky effect.
Your thoughts?
I confess that this was a very busy meeting tonight. And so this was the topic that I was able to review the least. So I don't know as much about this bill. I wish I had more time to review it before, if we're going to take a position, but.
I would just say, I think it's, in principle, better to pay for what we use rather than pay for what we don't use. So in that way, you know, it's a simple response that I have.
Yeah, the only concern I would have is the cost of the metering. So like if we can add electronic metering to our mesh system and it's, you know, not more than we would be saving, then yay. But if we have to start paying for meters installed by our utility supplier, that could be a whole different equation. So that's kind of something.
Certainly include that in our letter.
Yeah. It just seems like information we need to know. But I don't think a letter is authorizing anything.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board authorize the town manager to submit a letter of support of Senate Bill 2102.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
The next one, Mr. Chair, is the policy regarding executive session minutes. We made the only change that was requested by the board. Was.
Oh, you pulled over.
Change forthwith to in a timely manner.
Right, yes, you don't have to pull over inside of that. Very well. Any comments, thoughts?
Our thought is that we, the three times a year would be sort of on the July, November, March timeframe. And we just get on it this summer and go forward.
Sounds good. I'd welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board vote to approve the revision to the policy regarding executive session minutes.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, all right.
Just a reminder that, well, I'm sure you'll remind the community that the Fourth of July is next week, so I'll leave that one on. July 9th, the select board, in lieu of their regular meeting, will have a goals workshop late afternoon into the evening. So I will say, some things that are time-sensitive might crop up that might require sort of a short meeting of people who can come. But we'll let you know if anything does come up because there's a long way between tonight and August 13th.
Right.
But there isn't a week, other than that week, where all five. But there isn't a week, other than that week, where all five members are here.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, committee reports. Anyone have anything need to share?
I believe they're scheduling occurring for the Stormwater Bylaw Working Group.
Yes. I did my doodle. It's coming up first, somewhere first half of July.
The SEAL and Brandon Committee, maybe just want to update on that because when we last met, we thought we were getting out to people for a vote.
It should go out Thursday.
Thursday?
It'll be announced in the News You Need 'Em Thursday. It's the current plan. Unless we hear back from, unless I hear back from committee members that they want to meet first, but I think it's fine. It's substantially similar to the one.
Given the vote that we took tonight on water and sewer, which we might have thought would be going in News You Need 'Em sometime soon, maybe this week, it makes sense to me that there would still be some comments there related to bills just to give residents some more information, so I hope that will occur.
Yeah.
I talked to Amy about that. I'll double-check on that.
Yeah, just Dave's comments were in-depth, and it'd be helpful. Anything else? Welcome home.
Thank you.
All right, there's a, Needham's farmers market is open for the season. It opened last week. It's great. Needham Pride was last week. Juneteenth ceremony was actually really nice. Climate Action had its last meeting before it become, before it's reconstituted. Gabby, or what is it, Sustainability Manager. She went through a list of all the stuff she's, so up on grants and other funding she's digging up. And I think she's over $3 million.
Submitted or?
Submitted.
Yeah, so on Saturday, the redcoats invaded Needham. I felt a duty to tell them to leave, but that's it. And then the 4th of July is coming up, so happy 4th of July. I won't see you guys. But just a bit of a humble brag. On June 24th, 1776, Needham actually, Tom Meeting voted for independence. So we beat the Continental Congress, okay? Just a little humble brag. So extra early, Happy Independence Day. So we can continue to talk for the rest of the evening. I see no reason to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
There's always one. All right. I didn't get seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded, okay. I was seconded, all right. End discussion? Long discussion?
I'm amazed. I thought we were going to be here until 11 o'clock.
I thought it was going to be very.
Me too. Okay.
But now I'm up because I had coffee.
Very well. All right, let's have, all those who have adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're adjourned.